Recording in progress.
Hi, and welcome to the city council meeting, uh, October twenty first, two thousand twenty four. With that, if we could have, uh, roll call, please.
Luther.
Here.
Crowe.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Summerfeld.
Here.
Great, thank you. We don't have any special recognitions this evening. Uh, approval of minutes would be in order. If somebody'd like to make that motion, Ryland?
Uh, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last regular meeting, and do we need one for the, uh, special meeting, or is that? Okay, just the last regular meeting.
Yep, Laura?
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Great, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Uh, moves us down to public hearings, uh, public hearings tonight. We do have a public hearing regarding proposed ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen and ordinance repealing section ten, three, dash, one, C of the city code to eliminate protests against zoning amendments. Um, we're following, uh, Wisconsin state, uh, regulations, I believe it is. Uh, with that, um, I don't know, Eric, do you want to give an overview?
Yeah, so we're bringing back the public hearing, uh, regarding proposed or, or we're having a public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen, ordinance repealing section ten, three, one, C of the city code to eliminate protests against zoning amendments. This is a change, uh, that has taken place, just so that way our ordinance matches state code. This has been investigated by attorney Ludeman and has run through the process, and we're at the public hearing stage then now for members of the public to speak on their opinion about this particular topic.
Great, thank you, Eric. So at this time, if anybody'd like to speak, public hearing is now open on this matter. Last call for public hearing on this matter. Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion and move on with the regular meeting. Under public comments, public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on topic, on agenda items for the evening. So if you'd like to come up and speak, uh, please give us your name and your phone number and make sure the microphone is on. So come forward in public comments.
Fill this out, too?
Uh, good evening, city council members. Um, my name is Liz Osborne at ten thirty two Creek Ridge Court. I'm here to respectfully request your, your support for the replacement tree funding in the twenty twenty five budget. Over the past two years, approximately six hundred ash trees have been removed due to the Emerald Ash Bore infestation, yet only a hundred and sixty new trees have been planted. This leaves our community with a significant four hundred and forty tree deficit. As you review the budget, I urge you to remember that trees are not just a cost, they're an investment in our community's future. Prioritizing tree planting in the budget now will yield long-term dividends. Supporting this funding not only contributes to a higher quality of life, making Menominee a more attractive place to live, but it can also reduce other strains on the city's budget over time. Urban trees provide numerous economic benefits. They help lower energy costs by offering shade and cooling, improve air quality, and increase property values. Trees also reduce stormwater management expenses by absorbing rainfall, which helps prevent flooding. Additionally, trees extend the lifespan of infrastructure by protecting roads and buildings from heat and UV-related damage. The benefits go beyond financial savings. Trees also attract businesses, increase foot traffic in business districts, and boost tourism and recreation. A healthier tree canopy contributes to lower healthcare costs by improving air quality and reducing respiratory and cardiovascular diseases. In fact, a single tree can filter up to a third of harmful fine particulates from vehicle exhaust within a three hundred yard radius. Urban trees encourage physical activity such as walking and cycling. They also reduce stress, lower heart rates, and improve mental health by creating calm green spaces that interrupt the patterns of anxiety and depression. In addition to these health and economic benefits, urban trees enhance safety. They scatter, absorb, and reflect sound, reducing traffic noise by up to ten decibels, which can feel like a fifty percent reduction in perceived noise levels. Trees also have a calming effect on traffic, encouraging slower driving speeds and providing a natural barrier that shields pedestrians, making streets safer for everyone. Furthermore, the presence of trees fosters a sense of community pride. Neighborhoods with abundant greenery often see reduced rates of graffiti, vandalism, littering, and overall crime. Trees strengthen social cohesion and help build a stronger, more connected community. As we move forward, we are learning from past challenges such as the Emerald Ash Bore and Dutch Elm disease. By investing in a diverse species planting initiative, we can ensure our urban tree canopy is more resilient to future pests, protecting the city's long-term investment. In closing, I urge you to support the replacement tree funding. Investing in trees today will bring immense benefits to our city, financial, environmental, and social for generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Well, great. Thank you, Liz. Um, I know you're, uh, with the urban, um, forestry division here in the city, and I appreciate that very, but they failed to mention one thing. The birds. Birds love trees. And we are Bird City here in Menominee. Uh, and so I just had to catch you on one. This is the first time I've ever had the opportunity to catch you on something that you missed. So thank you for serving and thank you for being here tonight, Liz. We appreciate that very much. Thank you. Okay, public comment is still open. If anybody else would like to speak, now is your opportunity.
Hello, this, my name is John Hove, uh, seven fifteen River Heights Road. Uh, I've been a, living there for forty-four years, so I'm a longtime member. I'd like, I see Habitat for Humanity is on the schedule tonight, and I want to speak positively on that account. I would like to ask the city's support for the Habitat for Humanity. Uh, it's a nonprofit. We're building homes. I think most of you may be aware, we built one on Brickyard Road, and now tonight we're looking at building a second one, uh, come spring, and a third one probably later next year on that same, uh, area. It's a great, uh, opportunity, I guess, to have affordable housing. Right now, uh, Habitat is, is headquartered in Chippewa Valley, i- is in Eau Claire, uh, re- at the Restore Store, if you've been out that way. They plan to build twenty homes for the next year, and so we have a lot of options within the four county area. And, uh, it's kind of like, we have options, I guess, but where the best option is to build as far as price and location and people who want to have, uh, basically affordable home. And I think, speak to the affordable home issue. A person can get a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. There is no down payment. They have to meet ser- serious qualifications to be able to pay for the, uh, mortgage, basically, and there are strings attached, obviously, because they can't turn around and sell it. It's basically. But reason it's that in, inexpensive is that all the volunteer labor, all the volunteer, uh, materials going in there, Home Depot, a lot of other, uh, Anderson Window, there's a lot of very, very good people that have been supporting, uh, our Habitat connection here and throughout the whole country. So the last one was, uh, sponsored by the Faith Community and the Women's Build, those two houses, the twin homes there. And when we started out, we're not sure we were gonna make it, but, uh, with a lot of help from Eau Claire and a lot of help from the Lions, it's done, and we happy to say it's closing at the end of October, so then we have money to go buy some more. Uh, so I would like to basically encourage the city to be, uh, maybe not aggressive, is that not where it'd be, uh, receptive, probably right to the Habitat's needs. And if you want a house built, I mean, making us, uh, a reasonable offer and reasonable help, not, nothing special, anything that you wouldn't do for another developer in town. That's not, we're asking for anything special, but just basically support and, uh, acknowledgement of what Habitat is trying to do in this community. Thank you. And there might be, you know, a Jimmy Carter somewhere running around, around to join our group next year.
Well, thank you, John. Appreciate Habitat for Humanity, all that they do for people. So appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you. Okay, public comment is open. If anybody else would like to speak on agenda items for the evening, now is your opportunity to do so. Last call for public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion and move on with the rest of our meeting. Under unfinished business this evening, under five A, proposed ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen ordinance repealing section ten, three, one, C of the city code to eliminate protests against zoning amendments. Discussion, possible waiver of the first reading, possible waiver of the second reading, et cetera. So with that being said, um, I'll give the floor to the council. If anybody would like to introduce this, they can do so. Oh, it's.
Yep. Uh, thank you, Ms. Merritt. Uh, this matter has already, or the ordinance has already been introduced. It was referred down to the plane commission. Um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, David, but I believe it was unanimously, uh, um, recommended by the plane commission to, um, adopt the ordinance. So before you tonight, it would be a waiver of the first reading, waiver of the second reading, and then possible adoption.
That's what we need. If anybody'd like to, go ahead, Matthew?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen, an ordinance repealing section ten, dash, three, dash, one, dash, C.
Great. Jeff?
I'll second Matthews.
Okay, motion made and seconded to waive the first reading. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we'll need a motion to waive the second reading as well. So if anybody'd like to make that motion, we can do so. Ryland?
Yeah, I would make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen, an ordinance repealing section ten, dash, three, dash, one, dash, C of the city code.
Very good. Thank you. Randy?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded to waive the second reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we'll need a motion to adopt also as well. So if somebody'd like to adopt it, uh, now is your opportunity to do so. Laura?
A move to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen, or, an ordinance repealing section ten, three, one, C.
Great, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? To adopt? Ryland?
Yeah, I'll, uh, second Laura's motion.
Motion made and seconded to adopt said motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Simple, okay. So all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on. Uh, that brings us to six under new business. Uh, award Phelan Park Playground Equipment Contract. Uh, discussion, possible motion. Uh, I know Mitch is here, but I'm gonna give this, hand this off to Mr. Schofield first, and then you can possibly, uh, ask Mitch to come up. Mr. Schofield?
Yes, um, last year, the city council allocated approximately three hundred thousand dollars for replacement playground equipment at Phelan Park. Uh, sorry, replacement playground equipment. The Recreation Advisory Board, um, with, uh, some recommendations from Mitch and I, suggested to focus on a single park rather than trying to split up three hundred thousand dollars into multiple parks. Um, they chose Phelan Park as the, as the target, uh, for that, for those improvements. We did send out an, uh, request for proposals, and we sent it out to six different contractors. We got three proposals. Um, the Recreation Advisory Board reviewed those proposals last Monday and recommended, um, Northland, uh, Recreation. This is the one I have up on the screen here in, in just a second. Uh, there are two other proposals, and I do have just a, a screenshot of each one of them. Um, and because we wanted to spend three hundred thousand dollars, we couldn't very well do a proposal based on price, because we, we didn't want to go out and, and have one bid that came in at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then we had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that we needed to somehow spend by the end of the ARPA, uh, funding. So we was, we were pretty open-ended and said, we want the best playground you could provide us for three hundred thousand dollars, and then I had to come up with a way of, of comparing those proposals, and I, I can tell you from experience uh, that trying to, trying to rate playgrounds is about the least, uh, fun thing to do with a playground. So, uh, so we did, and we did enlist, uh, help. We actually took the proposals, and we, uh, went to the elementary schools that are in the city. So Oklaun, Wakanda, and River Heights, and we had the kids vote on it, because the kids, as I told them, are much younger and funner than I am, and they maybe have a better handle on what would be fun to play on. So, um, we did get some input from, from all levels of the community in, in this, uh, recommendation. So the, the recommend- recommended, uh, option is from, uh, Northland Recreation. Um, and they had a, um, playground, and I'm gonna get to, this is probably the best example here. So this is the playground that they had proposed. Um, the area in the foreground and going off to the right side, that is all handicap accessible. That is wheelchair accessible. Um, on the s- short, uh, left side here, this is, uh, a wheelchair accessible kind of a swing, um, so the kids can roll into that, and then it rocks back and forth. Um, so it gives them some motion, whereas, you know, normally they don't necessarily get a whole lot of, um, emotion. Um, there is, um, a number of slides that are on the backside of this. Um, this was the one that was recommended by the kids. I would say probably about sixty percent of the kids' votes. Um, and this was also the recommendation of the, uh, of the comparison. The next option? And I will do this very briefly. Uh, was from Lee Recreation. So this is the, this was the second, uh, choice. Uh, you can see this is maybe a little bit more compact of, uh, of an option. Um, it has the same handicap accessible area, but does have kind of a smaller swing for the children. Um, and then the last one was one from, uh, Bowlin Recreation. Um, which maybe was skewed a little bit towards older kids, and maybe that's why the, it did a little bit worse on the, some of the scoring at the elementary school level. So we did compare. Uh, as an engineer, I put together a spreadsheet, so we looked at the, at the various scoring here, and, and out of a hundred points, uh, Northland Recreation scored ninety point six points. Uh, Lee Recreation scored, uh, seventy-nine points, and Bowlin scored seventy-four points. So the recommendation of the Recreation Advisory, uh, Committee was to accept the proposal from, uh, Northland Recreation, uh, at a price of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, one thing, just to be clear, this, this proposal and that price assumes that the city would place, uh, wood chips below the surfacing or below the, the playground equipment. I am also looking at, at ways we can try to find, um, funds for the pour-in-place or a tile option. We would come back before this body for that option, but as of right now, this price is including just wood chips underneath it.
Ryland?
Um, if I understand it correct, this is using ARPA funds that are not part of the general budget? Yes, this was. Seems how we've just been discussing how to spend or how to cut things from the general budget. Um, I can see how some people might be kind of confused as to, you know, spending a big chunk of money on a playground.
Well, as, as everything that the city does, there's, there's priorities, and the city council enacted or at least requested a, a comprehensive outdoor rec plan. The number one thing that, that folks felt about our parks is that our playground equipment was in, in poor shape, and so they wanted to see some improvements on that. Back in December of last year, the city council allocated three hundred and fourteen thousand, I believe, towards, um, this. Uh, I I think that was a good and wise decision, and this is, we've come back with, with the proposals.
Great, Eric?
One of the requirements that's before you with the ARPA funds, too, is that we have to have the funds obligated and contracts out before the end of this year that we have to submit in the reports. So this is a very timely, timely bid for you to review.
Great, thank you. I know Mitch is here, too. Um, Mitch, I know you did a, a fair, um, uh, you know, you, you checked into a lot of different playground equipment and compared playground equipment. Hats off to you guys for going to the kids, because I think that was pretty cool that the kids actually are making the decision on, in the direction of where this should go, so we appreciate that. Thank you. Anything you need to add to that, uh, Mr. Schofield?
Nope.
Eric?
Uh, no, uh, I would just say this, that if, if you are in support of accepting the recommended bid, in your motion, make sure you please indicate that, that you're utilizing ARPA funds, so that way we can include that.
Okay, Eric?
If this gets approved tonight, what's the timeframe of completion due?
Uh, we had in the contract that they had to be complete, uh, by June first of next year. Uh, we have some surfacing work that we have to do after that, so I would say, just for arguments, I think that this would be completed by July fourth.
Good question. Thank you, Eric. Li, Li?
Oh, I'd like to make the motion to award the Phelan Park Playground Equipment Contract to Northland Recreation at a cost of two, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fourteen cents to come from ARPA funds.
Yeah, Ben? Thank you. Good motion. Matthew?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Mary?
I do, Mitch, I do appreciate the handicap, um, toy, um, playground equipment that was, was placed, um, that I think is badly in need, and so I, I really do appreciate that.
Good. I, I think that this is, uh, extremely needed, uh, and, and a great move forward to replacing a lot of the playground equipment. Um, I've got a five-year-old granddaughter, and, um, some of these things that, uh, she goes down, uh, phew, uh, right. So with that, we have a roll call vote, please.
Luther?
Yeah.
Crowe?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That moves us down to six B, award Christmas Miracle Shed Contract. Um, Eric, I'll let you take care of this one.
Yeah, so last year, we entered into an agreement, uh, to, uh, rent out the area of the Christmas Miracle for, uh, one dollar, and we were supposed to, uh, erect a shed and build one in that area. The, the weather was bizarre last winter, and it just really didn't get cold enough to be able to pour water to have the rink. So we didn't utilize the shed at that time, but we want to carry through on our contract. So we did acquire some bids for erecting a shed, and I'm gonna turn, turn that part of the conversation over to Mr. Schofield, and, uh, and so we want to try to find a way to be able to get there and fulfill our end of the bargain or end of the agreement that we had to build that shed, and David here will fill you in on the rest for the bids and where we're going with it.
Yeah, so we sent out a request for proposals, uh, we sent it to six different contractors, six or seven contractors. Uh, we got two bids, one from Structures Unlimited. They happen to be the folks that put up the salt sand building down at the Community Services Building. Um, and then United Metal Buildings, which is, they're just north of, um, railroad tracks on, at the Great American Fireplace site. Uh, they also submitted a bid. Um, I rejected their bid as unresponsive because they didn't include a bid bond, so we, as, in a bid like this, we have to require a bid bond, and they did not provide one. You know, uh, Structures Unlimited's bid was sixty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. We'd intended to pay for this project out of an ARPA allocation for, um, sheds in parks, and that was fifty thousand dollars. So just based on the, the bid in comparison to the budget, uh, staff is recommending that we reject all bids. And this is, uh, because we did a bid, we have to, we either have to accept a bid or we have to reject all bids, and we're recommending rejecting all bids.
Okay, Eric?
You know, one of the, one of the reasons, too, why we're recommending rejecting the bids beyond just exceeding our budgetary allocation is we've had some internal conversations, and we feel that we could erect a shed for a much less, much less cost, and, uh, we feel confident that we can do a good job at it as well.
Okay. That being said, um, do we need a motion to, to this? Okay, Ryland?
Yeah, I would make a motion to, uh, reject all bids for the, uh, Christmas Miracle Shed. Set. Works.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Chad?
I'd like to second Mr. Ryland's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to six C, proposed offer to purchase from Habitat for Humanity for lots five and six of CSM four nine two five on Brickyard Road. Uh, discussion of a possible action. Um, I so totally support Habitat for Humanity. I think they're a great organization. Um, I think the city went, um, out on a limb a little bit, uh, for those lots. Uh, there has been some requests for others to be able to purchase those lots, uh, but we do have an opportunity to extend, uh, Habitat for Humanity, um, an opportunity to, uh, purchase those at a reduced rate. But that, with that, I'm gonna have Mr. Schofield bring us up to speed.
So you may recall back in April, uh, March or April of last year, we created six lots on the south side of Brickyard Road. We sold, uh, we, this council approved three offers to purchase, so two lots each. Um, I believe it was in May of twenty twenty-three. Those purchases had, uh, due dates of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, and June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we did do the first sale, which is the furthest west lots. Uh, last year, that was, uh, that was closed, and, and there is a home on that property that, uh, Mr. Hobie mentioned is going to be sold to a, a resident in the near future. The remaining two purchases, um, so the middle two lots and the eastern two lots, those sales did not occur by the due date in question that was approved by council. So we are here before you with a new offer to purchase, um, from Habitat for Humanity. The first offer to purchase is the far eastern end. So if you go out to Brickyard Road and you drive to the very end and, and the road ends, these two lots are on the right side, uh, right before the, the road ends. It's lots five and six of, uh, Certified Survey Map forty-nine, twenty-five. And if I may, although it's a separate agenda item, just for clarity's sake, I think it's worth looking at the other map as well. Um, the second offer to purchase that's on your agenda tonight is for lots, uh, three and four. Lots one and two is where the existing home is. Lots three and four is just directly to the east of the most recently created, uh, completed Habitat home. The offer to purchase is for a total of ten thousand dollars, uh, for two lots. Uh, and the offer to purchase for lots five and six is to be closed by the Friday prior to Thanksgiving. Uh, offer to purchase for lots three and four is to be closed by the Friday before Christmas. So trying to move towards the sale of these properties and, and hopefully, as Mr. Hobie mentioned, um, development of homes on them next year. I would note that we do have a number of builders that have inquired about the purchasing these lots, if they're not going to be used by Habitat. So there is a, there's a reason why we're trying to make sure that Habitat does, in fact, close on these lots and, and moves forward with, uh, the sell, the sale and, uh, building of the homes.
Ben?
Uh, just want to add, in the offers to purchase, um, for both of them, there is a contingency on it if there are not, uh, building permits that have been issued by January first, twenty twenty-six. Um, the city would have the ability to repurchase the parcels, uh, that don't have the building permits issued for the five thousand dollars per parcel. Um, so there is the closing deadline for the sale of the property, and then also a deadline to make sure the building permits are issued.
I have a question, though. What is a normal value? I know we're giving Habitat a great deal on this. What is a normal value for a, a lot, and these are large lots, if I remember correctly. I don't know how big they are, but I think they're a large lot. Do we have a approximate value to what? Just so that we understand that we are giving a substantial discount to Habitat for Humanity. David?
Yeah, the, the lots are, each lot is fifty-seven by a hundred and fifty feet, so it's a fairly deep lot. Uh, twin home lot, I, I would guess that if we were to go out and, and get an appraisal on it, we were probably looking at twenty to twenty-five thousand, uh, per lot. I guess, eh, in the end, it's what someone was gonna pay for it. Um, but just as, as a, just a, a quick back of the envelope, I think at ten thousand dollars, we are providing a, a discount.
Eric?
So internally, we've reviewed, uh, the situation, and, and we certainly think it's worth extending, uh, this offer to the Habitat for Humanity. They provide great service. It's a great organization. Does have an opportunity for providing affordable housing. We just are, are getting a lot of pressure, too, from people who want housing of any kind. As we know, our housing study came back. We have housing needs at every level, from entry level, workforce, affordable, all the way to executive. And so in part here, we, we fully support extending this to the Habitat for Humanity, because again, they offer a great service for a great price for a community. Well, but we're hoping to eventually improve our housing stock, too, so that's why we want to bring this forward with you and see where you want us to go with it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to Lee. Lee?
Can we discuss these two together, or do we have to discuss them separately?
That's fine. They're pretty much the same thing, so.
I have, uh, I understand five and six, because they're closing on a house the end of this month, and we'll have money to buy the five and six. But we're showing here a closing on the three and four a month later. Now, have we talked to Habitat, to Mr. Dawson, and has, has he seen this? Is he agreeable to this?
I believe both offers to purchase have been signed by Mr. Dawson.
I've spoken to Mr. Dawson several times, and he did sign both offers to purchase.
So this is acceptable to Habitat?
Yes.
Okay. If it weren't, then I'd look at making the motion to extend three and four into twenty twenty five.
Let's get back to you, Matthew.
Yeah, just a quick question on if you go to page fifty eight, the packets. And you see the proposed land for sale. I guess what is that land, you know, right adjacent to that? Is that, I see some front end loader activity over there. What what is over there?
That was a former landfill that was then relocated to where the dog park is.
And do they still monitor like groundwater contamination? Do they have any monitoring wells, any, any? Or has that fully been bonded and released, or?
No, it's been closed.
It's been closed, okay.
Any other questions? Ryland?
Um, how many other lots does the city have in that area that would potentially be for sale in the future? Beyond these four?
David?
Beyond these four? Zero. We don't, at this point, we could look at extending Brickyard Road to the south and wrapping around in some way, but at this point, we we don't have any plans to do that. There are lots for sale to the north of that on Fairview Court. I believe there's two that are privately owned, but the city is not involved in those sales.
Gretchen?
I can't recall. Are these required to be twin homes, or can they be alternate building if Habitat chooses?
It's zoned R four, which is twin home zoning.
Okay.
Any other questions for David? Lee?
Would there be a problem of changing the deadline for three and four into, say, July of twenty twenty five?
As we already have a signed offer, I mean, it would.
Again, they've signed it for sure.
They have. The ones in your packet are signed on the last page on each matter.
Okay. Yeah, I would.
I mean, i- if the council so chooses, you can definitely request that on it. It would just make the offer to purchase in front of you null and void, and we can bring back, we can bring it back at a later date if you'd like.
We would. I would like to point out that they have, in fact, submitted earnest money for the purchase. They signed it, and they submitted earnest earnest money for this purchase.
Yeah, and they have been in contact, I know, with the title company as well as I have as well to give them a heads up to get the process rolling as well. And that was based on conversations David had with Habitat on that.
Well, how I see it is, we should go ahead with these offer to purchases. And then if something goes awry at a later date, we can always come back to this body and say, hey, you know what? We need to do this or that. And I think that would be something we could work towards. So Ryland?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve the offer to purchase from Habitat for Humanity for lot five and six of CSM four nine two five with a deadline of November twenty second, twenty twenty four.
And just to clarify for that, that's a closing deadline, correct?
For a closing deadline.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so just the one, then Randy?
I'll second my motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Discussion, Matthew?
No.
Nope, okay. Any other discussion on this piece? Okay, do we need to regular vote? Okay, all in favor of said motion, then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Okay, and now we'll address the second, second offer to purchase. Matthew?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the offer to purchase from Habitat for Humanity for lots three and four of CSM four nine two three with a closing deadline of December twentieth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that? Gretchen?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor of said motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Moving on. Okay, six D proposed offer to purchase, oh, six E. Proposed twenty twenty five Dunn County Humane Society contract. I know we have subsidies, but we also have contracts in place. This would be just for the contract and not the extra subsidy dollar amount, I believe. So Eric, if you take this away.
Yeah, well said, Mr. Mayor. So this is separate from the subsidy request from the Humane Society. We have an annual contract that we that we sign and are required to provide animal control services and humane services for animals. And this year, the contract in front of you, and by the way, it's per capita based. The total that we are going to look at expending is thirty four thousand, six hundred seventy five dollars and nineteen cents. If this is approved by the city council, you will see this dollar amount then affixed within the general fund budget that gets presented to you.
Good. Thank you, Eric. Uh, council, I think it's a great contract. I think it's a great service. And it's a, it's a fair contract. So if anybody'd like to entertain a motion, we could take that. Lee?
How long is this amount been in effect?
Yeah, it's based on per capita. So however, if our population goes up, it goes up.
I mean, the two dollars and oh, nine cents. How long has that been in effect?
That is something that we can negotiate each year. So this contract would then expire at the end of December thirty first. Of twenty twenty five.
Rephrase this. Is this an increase for twenty five or twenty four or twenty three?
Yes, it is an increase. It's about a two point five percent increase over what we were paying before as far as the dollar amount per capita, but our population actually went down. So then we see a a population difference, and then that impacts the overall cost too as well. So we lost about three hundred people in population from the last census that was published from the Department of Administration.
Good thing you got Estover opening up.
We are, we are very grateful that Estover and Maplewood Eco are opening because we feel that that'll recapture that population. So in turn, when Humane Society comes back for a contract next year, we should see our population numbers creeping back up to what they were before. That, of course, will impact the cost.
But I just want to add something to this. I believe our census is skewed a little bit. Don't they take UW Stout into evaluation in somewhat, in some form? I don't know if it makes up for three hundred people, but I see monomy is growing, and it's hard for me to imagine that we have less population here, but I know there is some there is some census that UW Stout, and so with more online schooling and so forth, it does play into a part of the city monomy census. So just wanted to clear that. So do we have a motion on the floor? No, Lee, Lee, go ahead.
Could this be amended to say that the amount that we pay them will not be less than what the amount for twenty twenty four?
Ben?
Let's, Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, it's, the formula is based and it's located in the contract based on current population. So whatever's listed in the contract, we won't be, that dollar amount is not going to be increased, decreased during this contract year, correct?
Correct. So when the, when we get to the budget cycle next year, then we'll wait for the Department of, Wisconsin Department of Administration's publishing of the census for the city, and then that'll impact what the cost of the contract would be for twenty twenty six.
My point is, it's going to go down for Habitat in twenty five over twenty four because the population went down. So I'm saying that if this math doesn't come out for twenty five, that we pay them what we paid in twenty four.
So I see what you're saying. Okay. I'd have to, I'd have to look at our our actuals to see, see what it was. But I don't, I I know what you're saying, but I just don't know the dollar amount offhand. Yes, it'd be slight increase.
So it is, it is an increase according to Eric on it, and it is set in, and it's estimated. Yeah.
In layman's terms, the way I see it is the cost is two and a half percent higher per the capita. But if we had more people here, that two and a half percent would actually drop down to less than two and a half percent, correct?
Yes.
So there's, there's a layman's, the way I see it in simple terms is, yes, the, the, the two and a half percent dollar amount is a little bit more because we have less people. But if we had more people, that two and a half percent margin would be less.
So Lee, wait, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're basically saying, you want to approve the contract with basically an amendment that the amount is not going to decrease past what the previous year's amount is. I'm fine with that.
That should work.
We can get that added in if the council so wishes to do that, and.
I think that's fine for a motion on there. And then the other thing I would like to point out too, so this, you you see a slight increase. And our, the Department of Administration has certified that the cost of living or the has increased about three point one percent. That's what's been certified, and that's how the formula I have to utilize for our levy limits. So if they're asking for a two point five percent increase, I would say that's very fair of them to ask for that. Inflation rate.
And if you want to make the motion, we can make sure that that's inserted in it as well.
So right now, we don't know if it would be a decrease gross to them.
If you want to give me a moment, I will go look and tell you. I could step off for one minute.
Off to the next meeting.
We certainly could. Put it off to the next meeting because you have two budget hearings that are coming up.
Let's see what we do.
We can do that.
Okay, I'll make that motion to.
We just, we just don't need a motion. We could just say, hey, we know because it's future discussion, I can just take it upon ourselves. So we'll just bring this back at the next meeting.
Okay.
We can postpone this and move on with the rest of our meeting. Okay, good discussion. Thank you. That being said, we go down to six F, the review of the twenty twenty five budget. We're only going to talk about real light, general talk about this this evening. Eric, if you want us to get started?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before you have the twenty twenty five draft two budget, that's the second edition of our twenty twenty five general fund. And and actually, if you want to scroll to the Humane Society, we can tell you exact, exactly what that contract was. You can keep going. It would be under public health.
Just a quick question. This, this wasn't in the packet for tonight, so is this going to be delivered to us electronically via binders or what?
Yeah, you should have received an electronic copy. We will have a paper copy. You not receive a, an electronic copy?
Yeah, Pam sent it out at approximately three o'clock today.
Oh.
Part of the reason why it took a while to get it because I was waiting on some other numbers that were coming on in from the state. In fact, we'll still be getting those numbers up until November fifteenth.
It was sent out at two twenty eight. There's two different, it's an additional subsidy plus the budget in the same email.
Yeah, they're big emails. So to go to Alderman Schwab's point in twenty twenty four, our dollar amount was thirty three thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars was the previous contract. Yes. So there's a slight increase. But anyway, to get back to the twenty twenty five budget, so that was the delay for getting that out there. And we do have some budget challenges here this year, but it's not all dark and gloomy though either. So we did have some reductions in some of our state aids, and we'll go over some of that in our next two meetings that we will have in November. We did have a slight increase in shared revenues, which is good news. We also did well in our investments. The finance department has done an outstanding job with our money market and sweep accounts, so that has helped us well. One of the challenges that we are facing in the budget is that our overall community assessed value decreased. It it isn't as bad as what is originally was anticipated, but we're going to be looking at a decreased value overall of about thirty million in our community. Part of that is an adjustment due to the personal property tax and how those rules have changed. The upside to that is we received a slight increase in personal property aid from the state. Don't quite make up for what our loss is. But nonetheless, there was an increase in that particular area. Another thing that did help us too is that we've seen some enroads into our debt service. We've been able to pay off some items. We've also closed some, a successful TID. So that money will come in as revenue as well. So there are some decisions that will need to be made. But overall, I think that we can definitely get there. The next two council meetings will be the ones that you'll get a crack. We'll go through every one of these departments by page. And then if you have questions, we'll have all department heads here to add or to answer questions about your requests. I will do the best I can. And as numbers from the state start to come on in, once we get closer to the end, we'll be able to provide some options for potential mill rates, what those will look like, what what you're looking at doing for investments in subsidies as well as contingency and all the other things that go inside of the general fund budget. You will be seeing a class one notification going out in the paper, which will signify the budget hearings that we will have in November that we are required to post by law. And once we get to communications, like to talk a little bit about the dates for having those meetings. We we talked a little bit about the first meeting in the, in the beginning of November as how it could conflict with our national election. And then also there's a date because I'm waiting for some information from the state that we're hoping we can move the meeting as well, and could talk more about that during communication time. Anybody have any questions about the draft budget?
So we need to have this passed by the November twenty something date.
Ideally, that would, that would be what we would hope for. There is opportunity if, let's say, this body hasn't made a decision or there's more debate needed. We can have a special council meeting, but we do need to have this passed as an ordinance by the end of the month, so that way we can notify the county. And then the county can submit that as well, and and we're required to submit all those reports by law to the state.
So we'll get deeper in the weeds in this next council meeting and then real, you know, the next one after that will be, you know, we'll have to talk serious about what we want to do and how we want to handle it. It's a little bit disheartening that the valuation went down by thirty million dollars because we just did a revaluation a couple of years back. And and it just, and just took the wheels right out from under us a little bit. If you take thirty million dollars, that's thirty million dollars less tax valuation that we can acquire. So that's, that's a ton of money for the city. I I do give staff credit. Eric and and Dave have been working diligently on figuring out other ways, and I do give our our treasurer to a lot of credit for making smart investments on some of the the monies that's out there, getting more revenues on those investments. I, and I'm really proud of our, not only our treasurer, but our whole accounting staff for really digging into this new software. It's going to save us a ton of money too in the future. But right now, we've got some money issues that we have to make some real smart and wise decisions on. And not only that, but there, some of them might be hard decisions. So we'll keep you posted on that, but if you have questions, please reach out to either Eric. Actually, Eric is the one that you should really be reaching out to because his finger is on the pulse of these budget items. So when you're going through these numbers and so forth and trying to get a a connection with what's really happening within the budget, you should really reach out to Eric and ask him questions because a lot of it, he has his finger on. A lot of the numbers from the state haven't come through yet, so it's really hard to to put an analysis on that. I know there's been a couple of phone calls to Lowell, praying he are past administrator. And he understands that you just got to be patient with the state because there's nothing you can do about it. So that being said, any other questions? Otherwise, I'd like to just keep on moving. Eric, do you have anything else to add?
The last thing I would just say and it builds upon what you touched upon, Mayor, is that we did an assessment a handful of years ago to close a gap, to get our assessed value close to the equalized value. State is the one that determines the equalized values. We only can determine what the assessed values are. Since the economy changed and really, really grew exponentially, our assessed values have stayed relatively the same. But as the state comes in and looks at equalized value by analyzing all the properties and what things are being sold at, that has blown up exponentially. So we've seen quite a gap. So we're at about that has blown up exponentially. So we've seen quite a gap. So we're at about a sixty four, sixty five percent assessment ratio gap. And if if we continue down this path and don't do another assessment within the next two to three years, the state will require us to do a community wide assessment. There's also a chance if if this is something that's desired by the council to do an assessment early. There's some things we would have to talk about if we do want to do that. There's some advantages and disadvantages to that as well. The the only upside, and I'll I'll be done with this if that's okay, mayor, is just say that if if we do do another assessment, whether it's within the very near future or when the state mandates us to do that, it should not be as costly it was as the last assessment because we already have all the records established for our parcels. Prior to that, we hadn't done an assessment in seventeen or nineteen years. It was a big gap because there just wasn't a lot of change between assessed and equalized. But thankfully, all those, we have all of those records and so the cost of an assessed, community wide assessment would not be as exponentially as expensive. But more to follow on all that. Thank you. Thank you. Well said, Eric. Appreciate that. So yeah, we need to advertise and push thirty more million dollars worth of growth out in our industrial and tech park and houses and everything else. And we'll be just fine. So we got two months to do that. Um, all right. That being said, I think we can move on. Oh, Mary, I'm sorry.
Eric, when we, um, when can we get paper copy of that?
Whenever you would like a paper copy, I can have one either delivered to you or available at City Hall. How many people would like to pick one up at City Hall? Paper copy. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight for sure. All right, very good. We'll get it done. Okay, that, uh, well, let's close out that particular discussion and move on to budget transfers. Uh, we've got a couple of them tonight. We've got Commander King. If you would like to come forward and tell us a little bit about what you've got going on out there, that would be great.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're looking to purchase a U T V to help us out to enforce our, not only our ordinance for the U T V, but obviously they're going to be all over the place um, in Menominee now. So we would, we would also use it uh, the U T V for uh, special events, parades, um, maybe using it out on Lake Menomen in the winter. Um, and surprisingly, a lot of police departments are moving this way. I didn't know these were that popular among police departments, but there's a lot of them in the area. And and even when we went down to Illinois last last month, I think every department we went to had a U T V surprisingly, and them are suburbs of Chicago, at least several of them did. So um, what we are looking to do um, is we had been allotted thirty thousand dollars um, in ARPA funds to get that space needs assessment done, and we only used um, a little over twelve thousand of that. So we're hoping to use those remaining funds to put towards the purchase, not only of the U T V, but of a trailer so we can haul it, um, the graphics, emergency lighting equipment um, to total uh, thirty six thousand, thirty five dollars. So with those, the remaining funds besides the ARPA funds, we're hoping to come from the contingency plan.
Okay, any questions for Commander King? Um, I know that there's a a lot of opportunities for a U T V, especially now that you can drive them on the roads and and so forth and so on. And you mentioned the lake and so on. Uh, this would be fixed up with, does it have lights and a siren and a radio? And what what is, what are the options that you're going to be putting on?
So the emergency lighting equipment with the siren, um, we would likely just use our portable radios instead of the the radios for an actual fixed radio that goes into the squad car extremely expensive. Um, so we did not include that cost on there. Obviously, we could go that route, um, if that was the council's pleasure to do so. Um, and then the graphics were three hundred and fifty dollars and we just loosely priced out a trailer through Goodrich, um, which was just under twenty eight hundred dollars. I would also add, it opens the door to a partner with um, Don County Sheriff's Department, whether they would use us as mutual aid um, to help them with some of their patrols. That's something we could explore in the future, or if they would just need another U T V um, for whatever event or um, incident that they are working on in the county as well.
And uh, Gretchen?
Are there other U T Vs in any of the emergency services? Like I've, my visualization of U T V uses sometimes, especially with the lake mentioned, where you have like a trailer behind or a skid behind it with a, you know, person on it that has to be removed from the lake, you know, in a stretcher, as it were. Uh, do do other the town, county departments have a U T V?
Yeah, they're they're especially popular with sheriff's departments and um, fire EMS to have those sorts of things, but we, surprisingly, like I said, there's quite a few municipalities that are moving that direction as well.
The sheriff's office has been kind of let the Menominee Police Department use it on occasion too. Rowland?
Um, two questions on here. Um, since this is going to be theoretically road legal, you need, need a trailer for it to haul it.
Well, possibly.
Yeah, so this is kind of, kind of silly.
Yeah, in the city, obviously, we could use it where we run problems as if if we're requested by another agency to use it, which is uncommon for us to get mutual aid for a variety of different things to go help other municipalities, uh, colonies, um, even fire department is a possibility. So that's where that trailer.
Um, and I guess my other question was the uh, I noticed that the model is noted being the premium has the premium designation on there. What is the necessity and price difference of that?
I was not involved in getting the bids. I was commander again, um, but I do know looking at the premium model, I think you're including stuff like a cab on it. Um, if we're going to be out in the elements, that would be something that's very important. And a lot of U T Vs don't come with that. You start getting up into a different price range or this sort of model. Um, and I will point out there should have been another bid included um, for the John Bear Gator, um, as well as the effect that no, the Gators of twenty twenty three, that does have a cab um, as well, and that the uh, the other ones of twenty twenty five.
Commander question, is it a two person or four person?
Uh, this one is actually three, I believe. So it would just be the single front row, the the bench seat in front.
Okay.
Where will this live?
That's a great question. We have some options. Fire department has enough to allow us to start um, and then our fire. Um, there's also some other options. The county has some storage facilities that are just across the road from the police department. If we asked them nicely, I think they would be open to allowing us to store it there because the police department um, is not a, not a great space. We don't have much garage um, space at the police department.
Okay. One thing I would add is that in the gap improvement request, police department asked for a U T V purchase for part of the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six borrowing cycle. So that that is something that would come before you if this isn't approved today. Because we have these ARPA funds that are available and you're required to allocate them, we thought this would be a great opportunity to reallocate with what they have left, but then also reduce potential borrowing in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. We had a lot of requests that came in that borrowing cycle, which will come before you certainly uh, for uh, consideration uh, during the budget process as well as next year when we actually look to borrow. So it does allow us a chance to potentially borrow for other departments too. So if we could take this off the books this year, it would be helpful next year. Okay, I agree. And I think our good, good use of funds, our good transfer money. I I understand the space needs study um, was a good study and coming under, under budget under, right? So appreciate that. Thank you, um, Commander King for being here and speaking this evening. Anybody like to make a motion to support this? You can do that at this time. Otherwise, we can move forward uh, on the right. So Jeff, do you?
You got another budget transfer.
You got, that's a second budget transfer. You want to do both at the same time? Okay. I'll do separate. Okay, we're gonna pick this one as a bright item then.
Okay. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers presented by the police department for the purchase of a U T V and a budget transfer of eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty five and two cents.
Would you like also add? Would you like, and would you like to ask, uh, add that that's ARPA money plus uh, the balance coming out of contingency?
The use of the ARPA funds cover the balance of seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars?
Well, just to clarify, our funds, uh, seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, the contingency funding, eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty five dollars and two cents for a total of thirty six thousand, thirty five dollars and two cents.
Is that what you meant to say?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do a note then. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second Jeff Hoover's motion? Mary?
I have a second just motion.
Okay, any additional discussion? Yes, Mary. Oh, microphone, microphone.
Will you loan this out?
I don't know. Loan it all, no. Uh, we will work with the community to utilize this best weekends.
I just figured if I could borrow it for a weekend, that's, that's all.
I will know that um, since the ordinance has passed that we've had some interest from at least one or a couple of our officers who are really um, getting into the D N R side of the U T V use and that sort of thing. So it's worked some interest in our department with the ordinance.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, that being said, uh, oh, everybody okay? Okay, roll call please.
Crow?
Yes.
Dylan?
Uncle?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Twits?
Yes.
Ants?
Yes.
Silverberg?
Yes.
Shoop?
No.
Erdman?
No.
Saffeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah. Motion passes. Uh, we have another budget transfer. Um, Mitch, do you want to talk about your budget?
Good evening, Saul. A budget transfer we were looking at is we had some leftover money in our part time. Wages for aquatics, um, were coming down towards the end of the year here. Um, we had about nine thousand dollars left. And um, there could be a big, big envision like the line of Google's chairs. And we can get them customized specific to what kind of water park or any park in general. Um, where we can get what kind of water park, their address and everything right on it. Um, we can have it installed up at the water park. Um, talking with, recommend whether the park form without one selling it. Kind of my south end where the sand, book, books used to be, um, and it's going to attract a lot of people and helping promote our water park. People take pictures, people check in at the water park, they're always taking pictures down there and the water will spread. Um, and the most have like amenities and different things in the picture as well. So people see it, we have a big slide stuff for the little kids, zero entry. Um, and on our end, it's nothing. People promoting the water park. And that was not even a last hand. Um, I talked to a pack room salesman at the recreation. And he said the lifetime, or the lifetime, these things are twenty, thirty years of material level of. So it's something that, what, that minimum maintenance, um, we had leftover money. I actually thought it'd be a good way to maybe help promote the water park.
Okay, any questions for Mitch? Jeff Hoover? Exactly what is the Burke giant chair? Is it something like Lenny's slide, big chair they got?
Yeah, it would be, it's big. It, I mean, when we toured up player equipment, we had like fifteen, twenty of us around it on it. So they're, they're big. As soon as people walk in, they'll notice it right away. They'll stand out. It's, it'll be a pretty good size. Then we're gonna work with the recreation, by the way, to come up with color and the design and exactly how, how, and we want to do it.
Gretchen?
Um, so you're round, it'll just be there year round permanently?
Yeah, we'll multiply it there like grass.
Is it going to say Menominee on it?
Yeah, they'll say like, say Menominee, what kind of water park. And then on the front, they'll say nine nine nine, probably have these with their address.
Okay, any other, just any other questions for Mitch? Maybe it's for the, for the, what can you do also? Mary?
I have a motion to approve the uh, request for um, forty five hundred dollars to come out of the um, revenue from the direct department for a custom giant Burke chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Matthew?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Second, is there any discussion on this? Roll call vote please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Uncle?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Twit?
Yes.
Ants?
Yes.
Silverberg?
Yes.
Shoop?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Saffeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Um, Major report. Um, well, I don't have a lot to report on. We do have stuff homecoming coming up this whole week, Saturday. Um, we do have some uh, leaf bags that's seen on the street and we have some pickups uh, through the mountain. I can't remember the dates exactly. Do you remember the dates?
Uh, today was the first one and it's the next three Mondays after this, I believe it's the twenty first, twenty eighth. The tenth or fourth, seventh, eleventh. I'm trying to remember the two, the the first Monday, the next three months.
Okay, great. I know that uh, the city water department uh, had that major break on Stell Road and and I drove a few times. You can't even tell that it was a break there. They did a fine job with that project. And um, other things, um, the slabs have been bored at the uh, the city site, the transfer station for our um, big road blocks. Um, so that's, I think Seacrew did that um, internally. Uh, it just, it just makes it everything a lot nicer when they're using it hours and that stuff out there and capturing those blocks and so forth. So I think they've done a great job out there with staff and the community. And I get, I just get a ton of feedback on our transfer station and a lot of thank yous. Um, I actually, I get so many thank yous that I never thought, who would think that you could thank yous on a, on a transfer station? Or I get thank yous for going over the Red Cedar or thank yous for the, the, the crosswalks down by Stell. I just the Menominee has really done a lot of things and it really looked uh, like, you know, we're on the move, we're progressive and things are looking up and I got a lot of thank yous from the entire community. So it's all of you that need to thank for all the positive um, motion uh, that you bring to this council. So I, I, the community, I want to thank the city council and staff for their time and your diligence to make things happen with Menominee because I, I get a lot of the credit and it's not, it's deserved by me. But I do, I do appreciate that I can pass it on to you. So that being said, um, stuff homecoming. Yeah, I think I covered it. Uh, Eric, if you have something to bring forward? Yeah, two things I just would like to confirm with council. First one is a reminder about November sixth, that's a Wednesday, to have a special council on, actually move our council meeting from that Monday to Wednesday. So that way our clerk can set up the national election on Monday night and Tuesday will be a busy day going through everything and holding the votes in the election. And then um, the following or two, the next council meeting, November twentieth is when I'm claiming that it will be okay for you to hold the next council meeting, which will be our final budget hearing. The reasoning for that is is the Friday. Before that, I will receive the last of the state information for revenues and whatnot. I and and it would gives me a little bit of time to be able to compile that and then also then give you options on potential mill rates to consider. And having the meeting right away on Monday with that coming on Friday would be very tight in my mind. So I'm, I'm hoping it's okay with this body that we can have the final budget hearing on November twentieth, twenty twenty four at seven P M. That's Wednesday. That is Wednesday, just, just like the first one. So the, the, the subsequent to next meeting would be Wednesday evening? They will be Wednesday evenings and they will be, they'll obviously have other items on it, but it'll be largely focused on going over the budget. Okay. Uh, let's see, other uh, anything else, of course, once, why? No, sir. Okay.
Oh, hell yes. We've got a busy couple weeks coming up. Um, starting tomorrow, we have early in-person absentee voting going on in the chambers here. Um, so October twenty second to November first every weekday, ten AM to four PM. Uh, Carly and I will be sitting up here, Deputy Clerk and I, and um, we'll have a line for voter registration and a line for people to come in and vote. Um, so if you are interested in doing that, we're highly encouraging it to kind of ease up on the pressure of election deadlines. Um, we have increased in our Badger books that we have at each polling location. So hopefully that will also help see things a little bit. Although you may not feel it because the turnout is just going to be so much bigger. Um, so please, also to just be kind to your clerks and be kind to your poll workers and be patient with them. It's a lot, a lot of work and it's a lot of detail and it's, it's just massive. So whenever we get those patient people, we're always very grateful for them. Um, and yeah, go vote. Go early. Not a problem. Once, so once.
Uh, the polling locations, are they the same? Are there any different polling locations?
Yeah, no, all the polling locations are the same. Um, originally we had Yeah, no, all the polling locations are the same. Um, originally we had, thought we would be in ballrooms at Stell. But it can be priced on it again, just a different room and price comes, it's a much larger room. So, um, yeah.
Matthew?
The boards have changes twenty twenty, correct, for the people who only vote.
Yes.
Four years that they have changed. So that's worth for people to know too.
Yes. So check myvote@w i dot gov, free polling location. Hate for you to stand in line all day and then get out there and get turned away.
What was that address again?
Myvote@w i dot gov.
Myvote@w i dot gov.
Yep.
Thank you.
Lots of good information there. Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Good going around the room. Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, Gretchen.
I, I was just gonna ask about the survey and what response rate is, or is it closed?
Uh, it is closed. We received, uh, approximately four hundred and fifty to five hundred, um, responses. We do have to notify folks that did not respond to this survey or that we did not have information for. So they're gonna be mailing one out in the next three weeks to folks that did not respond. So there will be approximately three thousand notices that have to go out to unknown, uh, customers or customers with unknown pipes. We do have seventy-four galvanized pipes that have, they have to be notified in a slightly different way. At this point, we have zero known lead, uh, surfaces now. Galvanized services usually contain some lead or at least lead in their lead lake. So those folks are, were treating them essentially as lead. Um, but we do have, um, approximately three thousand unknown materials. So your constituents will be getting a letter from us. Um, they may call you in, in panic. Um, but we will include a copy of the survey for them to fill out and we are rolling door to door. For those folks that just, uh, are not familiar with what they're looking for in their basement.
I, I'm looking to student and all word and. Are, are, is it, are, is it gonna go to landlords or the renters?
Going to the renters. And I have, I have a section there saying, if you are a renter, please provide a copy to the landlord.
Okay.
Um, to try to prompt them. We, we had very little, uh, hit rate on landlords, uh, responding.
That was a great question, Laura. Thank you, Gretchen. Eric?
Yes, I just need information, you know, Menominee high school varsity football league did make playoffs and they played this Saturday in, um, that scenario. And I just thought I'd go in round one.
Great. Super good, Matthew. Jeff? Uh, David?
I just have one question. We could skip over the Humane Society contract. Can we go back to that or we're passing one? Post one. Yeah, we're bringing it back.
How about anything from the federal office? How about tell us a little bit, you guys are gaining on the topic there?
Yeah, we're gaining on our civic. Yep, we are two utilities now. And so we're on the home stretch. So it's been a big change, but we're getting there and we're all decided. So.
Great.
Yeah.
Super good. Thanks so much. You'll have extra time on your hands all day long.
Yep. For all our projects.
Okay, great. I don't know. Can you, can you use your microphone, Jeff?
Yeah, it's okay. I just wondered, there's a program for people. I mean, this is, that's a substantial bill changer of the water line. Not the water myself, but they gotta dig it up and all that.
Yeah, David, do.
Financial comprehensive help out there.
Uh, not that, David, go ahead.
Yes, the thing responsible for the portion from the main to the property lines or the top, the remainder of it is the pro, is responsible property.
I don't know many programs at this moment. If there's something that we come across or if we could install some sort of program.
Yeah, there are some programs we can look at, at acquiring, um, some grant money from the D N R for, that would help us with that. Um, I have worked in, kind of worked with these have offered such programs. And probably they have is they just haven't had people take them up on it, even when they've had money that was free. Um, just as their reimbursement, uh, straight reimbursement, a lot of residents have not taken them up on. So as we get a little closer, as this, uh, gets a lot more play in the, in the media, talking about the dangers of land and. And water barrels, I suspect that that'll probably change a little bit. We can also at some point look at, do you know, or does it require? Removal by a certain date. As, as right now, our ordinance does not require removal of, of that levels.
If you, uh, uh, Brian?
Um, on, on that, I thought that doesn't West Cap have a, uh. Uh, zero interest loan program for the covers, uh, health and safety issues in homes. That I thought was the help. That lead pipe was one of the things that qualified.
They do, there's some pretty strict, uh, requirements.
Okay, moving on down, uh, Mary? Okay, Cody?
Can I add some more questions?
Yes.
Um, I, I just remembered that I had a couple constituents that wanted to pay their bill online and that is temporarily. Is, is there a timeline on that? Cause they'll do before, I thought.
Today it was, it was.
Yeah, so, so they weren't able to do that because they don't have.
Yeah, no, we took P S M down because we're not using them anymore. Um, we all have a new, um, online system. We just haven't gotten it up and running yet because we just brought utilities into that new system. Um, so it will be up and going before the new, the new billing.
Is there a waiting agency for the?
Yeah, we're not gonna put, um, penalties until probably the end of the week.
Okay, cause yeah, they were like, they, they were kind of blindsided by it and they.
Oh, we've been advertising for quite a while.
I figured.
But yeah, it won't be, we're gonna wait until probably Friday. They have a week. Okay, yeah.
Okay, thank you everybody for communications. Um, fire chief, do you have anything to add to it? Fire chief class?
Uh, years ago, fire department was loved, joined with Wisconsin task force. We currently have five members. That, uh, participate in a lot of training going to Volfield. Um, we just had about two weeks ago, one of our members deployed to North Carolina. And I just got a message from Bob Zimmerman, who was the Wisconsin task force leader. He just wanted to pass on, uh. That the team was demobilized and safely home. They arrived home, would have been Friday. He just wanted to say the mission went well and although they're tired, uh, they're thankful to be going and be part of the recovery process for the folks in North Carolina. They were successful in their mission and that they were able to provide closure for families in North Carolina through their diligent work with canines. So he just said, we're proud of their work and for what Michelle and Andy did with the dogs. So Lieutenant Andy Kish, uh, was down there for just about two weeks. Um, they were going, clearing debris piles. Uh, wherever the dogs hit, they would mark that and then keep moving on and another crew would come in to recover the remains. So he said, the fire department community would be very proud of the work they did down there. So thank you for allowing fire department to be part of that. And everybody had a hand in that. So just wanna pass that on.
Wow, thank you a lot. Fire chief class, appreciate that. Yeah, that's, that's good stuff, guys. Stephen, I mean, I have a lot to be proud of and thank you for that. Okay, moving on. Two, um, claims. Uh, do we have?
Just the regular claim. I'm sorry, the regular claims list is in front of you today.
So Jeff with, go ahead. Go ahead, Jeff.
I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, prove the claims list that I presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second Jeff's motion.
More, a second, any discussion? Mary?
Just a question on Gulfex Messenger, uh, general fund council minutes, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Is that just to publish the minutes?
Well, it's many minutes. It's not.
It's minutes, ordinances, all of that kind of stuff.
Oh, so that's kind of a whole. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, Laura?
I just wanted to check on the Excel, that the numbers here were right. Uh, forty-one thousand versus five thousand.
Jamie, do you wanna speak to that?
The total amount of the invoice was forty-one thousand, but we're only overdrawn five thousand.
So we budgeted thirty-something, thirty-seven something. Okay.
Yep, okay.
Good question, good answer. Thank you. Jamie, good, thank you for being here tonight, too, by the way.
No problem.
Um, any other discussion on this? Otherwise, um, we'll call board.
Janko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Hans?
Yes.
Stolberg?
Yes.
Shlo?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Good, thank you. That brings it on licenses, application for class A beer license from, um, three fourteen Gas Incorporated, twenty twenty Broadway Street South. And we're gonna do this separately. So Kate, do you have any, um, explanation for any of these licenses?
Uh, no, it's just a, a new, new business owner coming in and, um, wanting to kind of. Assume the same license that's already in place for this store. Um.
The store name and references?
Well, it's, it's called, it was the South Speedway. Um, I don't know if they're gonna be calling it Freedom Menominee. But that's what they put on their application as their D B A. Uh, I don't know that they're changing the signage or their branding or anything like that, but. Oh, is there? Okay.
Okay, this is the same licenses that were current, that were previously in the location. It's just new ones coming and it's new licenses being issued. But it's the same licenses that's transferred.
Yep, yep, yeah. Now the inventory would change.
Yep. Okay, so we would like to support it to the motion you can do so at this time.
Need a separate, oh, wait, that.
I'll move to approve the issuance of a class A beer license to three one four Gas Inc. Located at twenty twenty Broadway, Broadway Street South.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Lee?
Second to the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Oh, my favorite six five is saying aye.
Aye.
Now moving on to licenses, a B application for class A liquor cider only from three fourteen Gas Incorporated, twenty twenty Broadway Street. Uh, this is cider only, so it's a separate application. If you would like to make multiple support to do this at this time, Lee?
I can motion approve the issuance of a class A liquor cider only license at three fourteen Gas Incorporated. Located at twenty twenty Broadway Street South.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Cody?
I'll second that motion.
What's made in second, any discussion? On favor, six five, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Of course, thank you. Uh, we do have a closed session tonight. We will need a motion to go into closed session. Somebody wanna make that motion, Ryan? Thank you everybody for being here. Appreciate it. Ryan?
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Any motion made to go into closed session?